Call this meeting to order. Welcome one, welcome all. A call to order and doing our invocation today will be Reverend Brent Hobbs from the Senior Pastor of the New Song Fellowship. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. It's an honor to be here. Shall I pray and ask God's blessing? Our Father in Heaven, tonight we are thankful for a thousand blessings we've already received and come tonight asking for a thousand more, but only because of your grace. We thank you for this just past Christmas season and for sending your son, Jesus, to bring light and hope into this world through his life, death, and resurrection. We thank you for a new year, for new opportunities, for new beginnings. We thank you for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which we will celebrate less than two weeks from today. We thank you for his dream, that our nation would rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and we ask that you would grant these city leaders the wisdom to move us ever forward in the fulfillment of that dream. We ask that by policy and personal example, you would help all of us to value the full worth and dignity of every human being, especially those often left behind, ignored, or vilified. Help us to love one another and consider the poor, the disabled, the immigrant, the orphan, the unborn, the elderly, just as much as we would consider the powerful, the influential, the wealthy, or the prominent. Help us to love one another. We ask that you would allow us to see an end to political polarization, that you would allow leaders at every level of government to work together effectively to promote human flourishing, justice, and virtue. We ask your blessing on those who serve our community, from this city council to our law enforcement, firefighters, and all first responders, from our military and school teachers to medical professionals and social workers, may they all feel our appreciation and know the joy of serving others daily. And lastly, I pray for the churches of this city, that the people you've called to be your church would show love and humility to our neighbors and always be faithful to the gospel message you've entrusted to us. Bless this city, this council, and all those gathered here for this session. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir. All present except Mr. Moss who's ill.
Yes, Mr. Moss is undergoing through a serious illness and may we all lift him in prayer as we go forward. Okay. On behalf of the council in the city of Virginia Beach, I welcome friends and relatives. This is a very special occasion. This is your government, your local government in Virginia Beach, that is going to be representing you going forward. And I just wanted to welcome you and thank you, and welcome our new members that are sitting at the dais today. You are welcome in dishes to our team. We have a couple of special guests here. Drew Lumpkin from Senator Warner's office, and Diane Kaufman from Senator Kane's office. But you are all very special people and dignitaries in this office. And thank you so much for coming. At this point, could I call forward the Honorable Les Lilly, presiding Judge, Virginia Beach Circuit Court. Welcome Judge Lilly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the first person to be sworn in, Barbara M. Henley.
Do you swear your name and follow up the name? Aye?
Aye.
Say your name.
Barbara M. Henley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Princess Anne District?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Princess Anne District?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Louis R. Jones, District 4, Bayside.
He's my deputy campaign manager.
Repeat after me, stating your name. Raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye, Louis R. Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Bayside District?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Bayside District?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, we recognize Mr. John Moss, who is not here but was re-elected, and I believe he has been sworn in. But then next on the agenda is David Nygaard, District 6, Beach District.
All right, sir. Repeat after me, sir. Aye? State your name.
Aye, David Nygaard.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Beach District?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Beach District?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, now I have the pleasure, Aaron R. Rouse, at large.
Aye, Aaron R. Rouse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, at large?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, at large?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Next, James L. Wood, District 5, Lynn Haven.
Louis can bring his campaign manager, I can't do. I have two of them, well, I've got three. But the one that's eating, I've only two. Only one is going to be represented.
Repeat after me, stating your name. Aye?
Aye, James L. Wood.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Lynn Haven District?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Lynn Haven District?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
And next, Sabrina D. Wooton, District 1, Centerville.
Aye?
Aye. Sabrina Wooton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Centerville District?
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, Centerville District?
For a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God?
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
The next order of business is the election of the vice mayor. Do we have a nomination, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, about seven months ago, we had an unusual situation in the city of Virginia Beach where the mayor resigned, and it was necessary to appoint an acting mayor on behalf of the city council. The city council did me the honor of appointing me to that position. And at the same time, the city council made a very wise decision in appointing Mr. James Wood as vice mayor. I want you to note that nobody could have been more supportive of me as the mayor of Virginia Beach at that time. There was never anything that I asked him to do that he didn't do. And for those reasons, I believe that it's important that Mr. Wood continues vice mayor of the city of Virginia Beach. And so I therefore nominate him for vice mayor of the city of Virginia Beach.
Second.
Second. Any other nominations? The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have appointed Jim Wood as the vice mayor of the city of Virginia Beach.
At this time, I would like to thank everybody for coming, for being part of...
Is he going to be sworn?
Oh, who's that?
Me.
Oh! Oh, God, swearing! Yeah.
He's swearing.
Swear him in.
I lost the swearing.
Aye?
Aye, James L. Wood.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me?
As vice mayor of the city of Virginia Beach?
As vice mayor of the city of Virginia Beach.
For a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
For a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2019?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
There we go. But once again, thank you for being part of this very important day in, you know, the history of Virginia Beach. And you're all welcome, and I am glad you were able to participate. At this point, I'd like to call on council comments. You know, Mr. Vice Mayor, you've been sworn in twice today. Please make some comments.
Thank you. Well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that the public had in electing me, and then also that my colleagues had in electing me. I think it's important, we've got a new council together, as Aaron calls us, a team, and I think Aaron's going to bring a lot of the team spirit to us. And I think that that's certainly going to be helpful. Likewise, with Dave and Sabrina coming in, I think we're also going to have some brand-new perspectives, and I think that's really good. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize my family in the audience. You guys met my one grandson a couple of times, James, his brother Henry, and his other brother, George, my son Jimmy, my daughter-in-law Alex, my brother Chris, and his wife Chrissy, and of course, my wife Rebecca, who are all here tonight. And I just couldn't do it without their support, so thank you.
Thank you. And the formal seating of your new council is now in place. And now I'm going to ask each individual council person to please make some comments. Aaron, please start.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Virginia Beach. There's a special ladies' audience I just want to thank. My mother, Nadine Rouse. I want to thank my mother, as well as my brothers and sisters, Adrienne, Avery, and Andrea. They actually made me who I am today. So I want to thank them as well. It's been a long road, coming from C-Tech community as well, one of the most impoverished communities we have here in Virginia Beach. And I want to say thank you to our first responders, our teachers, the community throughout entire Virginia Beach, because, you know, I would not be here today if it wasn't for the teachers at First Colonial, Lynn Haven Middle, Burton Elementary, C-Tech Elementary, and so forth and surrounding. And, you know, through their hard work, their dedication, their sacrifices, they allowed me to make it to college, Virginia Tech, Go Hokies, and allowed me to sit on this stage here. So with every decision and vote that I take, I do so with the citizens in mind, and I do not take this job lightly, I take it very seriously. And I want to say thank you. And mind you, that you always will be up here first, but in here always. Thank you again.
Thank you. Jessica Abbott?
I think, though I didn't have to endure the election cycle this go-around, I think to say that the election was contentious, and passionate, and exciting would be an understatement. I think every person who ran this last cycle endured their own challenges. But I think that speaks to the tenacity of the city that we live in, and I am excited to be joined by the new council members and the old as well. And I think that what we're presented today is a truly balanced council. I'm excited to see the unity under the leadership of our new mayor. I'm optimistic, I think moving forward, we're going to see great relationships, great strides in the city. And I think, most importantly, I think you have a council that is going to be a champion and a voice, and I look forward to the next two-year cycle when we make sure that that stayed true. But congratulations to my colleagues who I've already served with, and welcome and congratulations to my colleagues that I get to serve with now, and I am appreciative of your service.
Thank you very much. Barbara Henley?
One more speech before we get to work. I too thank my family for allowing me to do this again, my husband and my sons and their families for their support, and all of those folks who worked so hard in the campaign, and those folks who voted to allow me to have another term on the city council. I have enjoyed a number of terms and watching the city grow and develop, but I really feel that we're at an extremely important point. And the decisions that we make over the next couple of years are going to really determine the future of our city. We know that we have some very pivotal decisions to make, and I really look forward to working with the council and the community as we address those issues. And as I said, I think I'm ready to go to work and look forward to working with you again.
Louis Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you've already met my deputy campaign manager, and I would like to acknowledge my wife, who is sitting out in the audience here. Would you stand up, please?
Oh.
She's put up with a lot after nine campaigns of running for city, or ten campaigns actually of running for city council. Why, you've got to admit, she's got a lot of patience. It's been great serving on city council all these years. I look forward to the next four years, and I welcome our new city council members, Aaron and Sabrina and David. And I look forward to serving with you, as well as with our other city council, veteran city council members. And it's great to be up here with you, and I look forward to making a lot of good things happen for the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
One of the most, the greatest and most honorable things I've been able to do in my life is to serve our city that I grew up in, you know, going to high school, you know, elementary school and high school here, and becoming a teacher, and then serving the city, and also way back on the school board, too. But we really have a great city. As Will used to say, "The greatest city in the world," and we have the greatest citizens in the world. And we have a lot of exciting things ahead of us. This is a page of a new day with a big change, but it's not the greatest one. I mean, it's 2002, we had five new council members. We survived that. He was one of them. But I really look forward to serving with David and Sabrina and Aaron, and with the current council. And believe it or not, as much fun as campaigning is, it's over, and it's time to roll up our sleeves and start governing, and make sure that we do the right thing for the citizens of our great city. So happy to be here.
Thank you. Shannon Kane?
Hello, everyone. How are you? I just want to say thank you to everyone that voted for me a few years ago. I was telling Rosemary, I'm much like Sabrina was appointed, or not appointed, but I ran, well, I was appointed, but then I ran and got a two-year term, and then had to turn around and run again for my current term. And I said to Rosemary just now, this is the first time there was a swearing in that I haven't had to do that. So it feels kind of different sitting here and watching other people getting sworn in. But David, Sabrina, Aaron, welcome to the team. I'm excited about your fresh ideas, your new perspectives, and your outlook on things. And Louis, and Barbara, and Jim, and Rosemary, and Jessica, thank you for being here and having the experience, and the guidance, and the history, and the knowledge of all the things that, where we've been. And we have the new team about where we're going. So together, I think Jessica's right. We have a really good team here with a blend of past, present, and future, and we can make this even better in Virginia Beach than we already have. So thank you, guys, and again, welcome to the team.
Sabrina Wooton?
Thank you. I'd certainly like to recognize my husband, who's here, Donald Wooton, and friends and citizens who are here. This year and this month marks a new landscape for change in our city. I'm very thankful to God, those who served before me, and the citizens of Virginia Beach, for the opportunity to serve. I am also thankful for every contributor, volunteer, the organizations that endorse me, and many who worked behind the scenes to advance my campaign. I am prepared to do my very best to serve faithfully and impartially, carrying out my oath by working in tandem to execute the mission of this great city, by enhancing the economic, social, physical, and educational quality of our community, as well as providing municipal services that are valued by our citizens. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
David Nygaard?
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. It's a little bit overwhelming, having just walked in here. It's pretty amazing. I want to, first of all, thank you, the citizens, for giving me a chance. Many of you gave me an ear when I was, when people weren't taking me seriously. And I want to thank especially my dad. I saw him come in late. Could you stand up, Dad? Forty years ago... Thank you, Dad. Forty years ago, my dad was brought here in the Navy, and little did we know that we would be here and make this our home, but it has been a wonderful home for us. Many of you also know that we've had a very challenging campaign, and highly publicized even this afternoon. We were laughed at, we were dismissed and ignored, but many of you here saw it differently. I see many of the pastors that welcomed me into your churches, Dr. Daniels, Sonny, Dr. Gatling, I see a number of you here, and I thank you for that. This is the city where my mother started our family business, and we still run it today. This is the city where I had a massive heart attack nearly two years ago, where I coded in the ambulance, and yet I survived, thanks to our first responders. And this is the city that saw to give me a chance at running for city council and being elected for city council, and I intend to give it, and you all, everything I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And distinguished guests, family and friends, please welcome your new city council team. Okay, now on to some business, please. I move for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, votes open?
By a vote of nine to zero, with Mr. Nygaard abstaining?
Wasn't that the minutes?
No, that was the certification. Did you want to certify?
Sorry.
So ten to zero with Mr. Nygaard verbal, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Still...
Yes, certified the closed session to be in a court with a motion to recess.
He'll get used to it.
I still make some boo-boos, trust me. Okay. Okay, now we go for approval of the minutes of the informal, informal sessions of December 11th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in a second? Votes open.
By a vote of eight to zero, with Mr. Nygaard and Mr. Rouse abstaining, you have approved the minutes submitted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now on to business on the resolution. I believe the, there was no consent agenda at this point, so, Madam Clerk, could you call the first speaker?
Yes, Barbara Messner.
On the resolution to direct the city attorney to file a petition for a writ of special election, our evacancy of the Office of City Treasurer?
I would just like to ask that the $100,000 be spent to have the seat filled within the 90-day period versus waiting until November, since our city treasurer left after only one year, and the city appointed the person in the interim, and I think it would be great if the citizens could have a chance to vote without waiting until November. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion on this? Or a discussion? Any?
Move for approval.
Both move to approval?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, no discussion coming forward? The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the resolution.
Okay. This one, appointments. Okay, move forward. We do have a few appointments tonight.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move for, nominate the following individuals for appointments: to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Dr. Cynthia Romero; to the Beaches and Waterways Commission, Patricia Keely; to the Southeastern Public Service Authority, Bobby Wheeler as an alternate; and at the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Jeremy Caleb Johnson.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
Sorry, we have one speaker for appointments.
Okay.
I want to wait until they all, I have all their names.
That's all the appointments, Ms. Messner.
I thought there were 26 of them.
That's all the appointments that were considered tonight.
Okay. Then I will ask, thank you.
Okay, so no speakers.
Okay, votes open?
By a vote of ten to zero, you have appointed those as nominated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, Sabrina Wooton, I understand that you have a special recognition tonight.
I do, and she's not aware, but there is a young lady by the name of Anaya Abdelbeki that I would like to recognize. I met her and her beautiful family when I was on the campaign trail, and she's a third grader. Just a little bit about her, she is a gifted honors student at Christopher Farms Elementary School. She participates in Spanish, in the Spanish immersion program. She also enjoys writing fiction, creating artwork. She likes to go shopping, solving science and mathematical problems. She enjoys playing volleyball, as well as watching action movies with her mom and her sisters. Anaya is an exceptional student, and I expect great things for her, from her in the future. As a result, I just wanted to recognize her, and have her come up, and give her a pen for all that she has done and accomplished. I'm very proud of her. I'm very proud of her.
Okay, our last order of business is for the city clerk to accept the abstract of voters from the general election of November 6th.
Yes, sir, I have them.
Okay, is there any other business? Okay, all that being said, we're going to adjourn, and we're going to invite, we're having a reception after, you know, hopefully you will all join us in fellowship and meet the new team. But we're going to adjourn, but we're going to have open mic night, you know, prior to doing that. But once again, sincere thanks from all of us for you taking your time and effort to join us on a very special evening. We are adjourned.[1714.47]